All set?
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome back to open session. Public comments, anybody have anything they want to say? Having none, we'll go on to approval of minute meetings. April 30th, 2018, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nancy, was that the one I sent you a comment? There was a small change, one of the articles, Article 34, it said something about income tax and was a tax abatement on the discussion, so I sent Nancy that change.
So, are we just approved with changes?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
May 2nd, 2018, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2002, 2018, executive session.
May 2nd, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May 2nd, 2018, executive session number two.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Warrants, Ben?
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants as printed in the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Eagle Scout, we're going to put off till... You have a report on that? He was going to do it on his project, John Susan.
I don't think that was set up, we'll put that off.
Yeah, we'll put that off. Next one, Harry?
I can just, can you just report that the item that the memorial has been built, it's been installed, and I'm not sure, what was he going to come present, something to us tonight? I'm not exactly sure.
Well, we thought we'd have him in here, do some kind of presentation, maybe do it like in from six or seven, kind of a presentation for the memorial.
Yeah, I didn't know early why it's on me.
He had asked me about it. He had asked me about it, and I talked to him, but then he started communicating with him about a few other things he's going to do.
Yeah, it's not, it's not fully complete yet, so I think if we're going to do anything, we should wait till it's completed.
Right, okay. We'll do that. Considering approving Nancy Lucier as an alternate Singletary on the Building Department payroll and payable vouchers.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recognizing acceptance of the following donations from the Bantston Committee and to approve expenditures of these funds for general purposes, $265 from Walter C Cranston, $265 from Reservoir Garage, $265 from John McCormick in memory of Pauline McCormick.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Board summer meeting scheduled July 18th or 25th, does anyone have a preference?
I thought I saw an email on the 25th is, it was, Pat, didn't you suggest the 25th?
I suggested the 25th because I cannot make a meeting on the 18th.
I cannot either, so the 25th works for me too.
Sure, does that work for you?
Sure.
No, 25th, I do have a planning board.
So we're going to...
Both 18th also not good.
Okay, so we...
So that's not going to work.
So we have to put the other.
Or August 15th, is that the other?
No, that's already the next, that would be the next month, so.
So back to the drawing board.
No, we do have four that can be at the 25th, I mean...
Okay, yeah, okay.
But you couldn't be here the week before anyway.
About summer meeting schedule, that's, that's about regular meeting, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm fine.
25th.
25th is fine, sorry.
Okay.
I was thinking, you know.
And August 15th for the next, for August.
Oh, only one, we're only going to have one in August?
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, that always works.
That's going to change.
It worked last year.
It did, yeah.
That's fine.
So, we have July 25th and August 15th?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, are we all set for that special 15-minute meeting on July 2nd, for the accountant to do the year-end transfers? Nancy seemed to indicate that everyone's, could, we only need three people, it's just the quick approval of the transfers.
July 2nd?
July 2nd, it's a Monday.
Monday. What time?
6:30, we were thinking.
I'm not sure I'm going to be here, since you sent that email out, things changed.
July 25th.
We need three people.
I would be here.
July 2nd.
You won't? I'll be here, will you be here?
July 2nd's a Monday night?
Yeah.
Yeah, I should be here.
Right.
Will you be there?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Good, thank you.
All right, so...
So July 25th.
And August 15th.
August 15th and July 2nd for 15 minutes.
Yeah, all right. Any vote, or just, you don't need to vote. All right. Consider fire chiefs request to grant permission to the host of the Wauthusit Fire muster on June 26th at Central Street and Church Street.
So moved. Second, I mean, the week.
Any discussion, is anything?
We just wanted to let the town know that we'll be using the street right there in Central Street, we took up permit out with the Parks Commission for all three commons. We are looking for any organization from town that would be willing to do a food booth that day, we generally used to do it ourselves, but we just don't have the personnel with running the muster and trying to do that. We've reached out to the Boy Scouts with no, they didn't have enough personnel either, but if there's an organization that's interested, they could reach out to me and we could coordinate that, and then next we'll either offer it to another organization from an area town, or we'll offer it to one of our food vendors from town. But we just wanted to make you aware that we will be using the street, be touring it for the day. It's about 10 to 4 on Saturday. We have eight communities that participate, they all supply certificates of insurance to the town, as well as we get our own, and it's a fun event for everyone.
Great.
If you can't get a food vendor, you should reach out to the PTAs that they put on the, I can get you their information, they put on the year-end carnival thing, and they get a couple of food trucks that come in, and the food trucks write a small donation to the PTA, but I'm sure, if you can't get anybody, I'm sure they'd be willing to do it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, any vote?
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, treasure collector staff stipend?
So the treasure collector has asked that we give consideration to providing a stipend to her two employees. She had been out of the office for quite a significant amount of time, following some surgery this year, and per the recommendations that the personnel board had developed, she was looking to try to get some extra compensation to recognize the extra workload that was put on her two people in her absence. She ran the numbers, and she's coming up with a value of $217.44 for each of the employees.
The personnel board is recommending this?
Personnel board, it follows the recommended approach that the personnel board developed.
And whose rate is she using when she's calculating it? I'm a little confused as what I'm reading.
Yep, so it's, what it does is that it, per the policy, it would take her, lowest of her grade, and apply it to them, so she's taking the difference between those rates and applying it to the number of hours.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Chairman's report on Town Administration's performance report, we met last week, we went over something, I just want to do a general overview of everything, and anybody can make a comment if they want. Number one was service and support to the Board of Selectmen, I did these averages by taking all the five reviews and averaged them out, that's how I came up with it. Service and support to the Board of Selectmen is below expectations, we all talked about the reasons we have last week, hopefully we can move forward with everybody. Budget preparation and administration is below expectation. Managerial skill is, does not meet expectation. Human resources below expectation, relation with media and community is below expectation. Goal-setting and achievements does not meet expectation. Relationship with federal, state, and other government units meets expectation. Dealing with uncertainty changes and conditions, below expectation. Risk management is below expectation, and personnel and professional growth is below expectation. Again, we met last week, we all have our reasons for this, and I think we had a good discussion, good place to start, and this is certainly something we can work on. I mean, I'm going to give the originals to Nancy, and I'll give the copy of this to you, I believe, and if there may have any comments. One thing I would, two things I would like to say, the way the report is, I think is very confusing, I'd like to, and I asked you about this at the beginning, we do a simpler report, and maybe do a numerical, numerical report, I think will be easier for the, for us to use. I mean, most towns rate one through five, not, not like this, so I think that would be something we could do maybe next year, so we can come up with a better idea.
The problem with the one to five is, what's, you know, for me, if I, on a scale of one to five, if I give somebody a three, my default position is if they're doing their job, they're getting a three. If they're doing something above and beyond, they're getting a four. Almost never will I give somebody a five, that's just the way I rate. I personally like the verbiage of above expectations, meets expectations, below expectations, does not meet expectations, because that's, you know, your five could be my three. So I personally like the written...
Well, I'd just like to have a discussion on it later on.
Okay.
Something to talk about.
I don't think only the grading system, I don't like the whole, I mean, there's already a few things that we're going to, we've used it so long that we don't think should be under the town administrator's, so I think that part of it needs to be looked at also.
I do.
How we'd rate it, if it's, use the current system, calling it one through five, or calling something else one through five, as long as everybody is on the same page.
Right, I think it's something we can work on for next year.
I'd like to see an actual date that we start working on it, well in advance, so everybody's on the same playing field, so we know ahead of time, we've all agreed, you take your input as well. I don't know if other towns do use the personnel board, I know other towns have used different ratings, I personally like one to five, I use it when I'm rating my own staff, for me it's easier, and I just think it would be better that we start much sooner, rather than later. So I'd like to see a date on the calendar that we would either have a subcommittee work on it, or however, you know, all of us decide to do it, but I think that would be a better process.
I agree, I think we have it, early, the earlier the better, like you said.
Right.
All right, do you have anything you want to add? Okay, all right, that's it.
So, in the past, we, every board member got a copy of this, so they could read what other board members say. Are you saying that that's not the case? In the past, we've always got...
I have.
No, we haven't.
The reviews?
Yeah.
No, we haven't.
Yeah.
Well, if I remember.
I'm giving these reviews, Nancy, I'm not sure. I don't know, I don't know the answer there.
What have we done in the past? I mean, maybe Mr. Richel could be right, I just don't remember that.
I mean, I've got them in the past.
If you've got them, you didn't get them from me.
No, the chairman passed them to everybody, that night he would pass out everybody a copy of them.
Okay, then...
So we never get to see what another board member said, to help, to help us better understand it, we should be able to see.
That's a discussion between you and...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why it's such a sealed, sealed system.
I don't have any issue with, with everybody getting a copy of everybody else, and I agree with Chris, it would be helpful, you know, to see, people verbally the other night said this, you know, made discussion points, but I'd like to see what everybody else said, and I may say, oh yeah, you know, that's, that's right, or no, I disagree with that, and, and you know, it'll give me a better understanding of how the rest of the board came to their conclusions.
It's fine with me.
Yeah, I don't care.
Okay. If that's the case, Nancy will give you all copies of them. All right? All right, are we all set with that? All business. Discussion next steps for cemetery land RFP process. Jack, you want to...
Jack, you guys going to come up from the cemetery? Okay.
Would you like me to lead into the conversation?
Sure.
Okay. So, just to give a little bit of history here, the town, at the request of the Cemetery Board of Trustees, had gone out to do an RFP to give proposals from landowners in West Boylston for additional land to expand the cemetery space. We've been receiving notice from the Cemetery Board for quite a while that we are running low on the number of spaces, we have approximately four years left of space available in our existing Mount Vernon Cemetery. We went out for a proposal at one point, and no action was taken on that, we went out a second time, and we received two proposals. The Cemetery Board reviewed those proposals, and they took a vote earlier this year, that they recommend that the, the proposal that's most beneficial to the town is a roughly 20-acre piece of property owned by the Gambasini family, located at 135 Pierce Street. The Board of Selectmen met with the Cemetery Board at a site visit, and viewed the property, and tonight's discussion was intended to be a joint discussion to determine, do we feel that we're ready to make a final decision about moving ahead with negotiating a purchase and sale agreement for, with the owner of this property on Pierce Street?
Ronnie did most of the work, so I think, I think he probably would be, you know, he, he walked all, all the land in, and then he came back with the recommendations, and we quizzed him, rather than...
Do you have any questions?
Just to let the people know that, the Board of Selectmen walked the land last Wednesday night. It's a very level, 20-acre, right, 19.5, something like that?
19.2.
Yeah, it's a rectangle, basically.
Acre lot, up on Maple Street, in the corner of Pierce and Maple, it's a very level, not much wetlands here at all, it was surprising how level it was.
Well, just to, just to clarify, how we're really talking about right now is to have somebody go to negotiate with this property.
That's the next step.
Then the process starts about informational meetings, telling people what the lands look like, telling them why we need a cemetery, talking about what it's going to cost us, that's, right now it's just the stage of negotiating something.
We'd be negotiating the price, we'd be negotiating the conditions upon which we'd be willing to close the deal, that could include, you know, it could include possibly testing of the soils.
We want, we want to test bore for bedrock, that's the one thing we can't possibly see, you know, because the dirt is there. My guess is that we're going to be fine, because it faces, the hill faces north, and when the glaciers came down, they tended to deposit their debris on the north side of hills and mountains, so I think we're going to be very safe there, but what we would not want to do is spend money on a piece of land that we couldn't use as a cemetery, if indeed there is bedrock that's not, you know, within five feet of the surface, then we'd have an issue. So we're going to test bore for that if we do proceed out of cemetery funds, and that would be one of the main conditions of purchasing the property.
And obviously, the other condition of a purchase and sale agreement would be that it would be conditional upon town meeting approval of the funds.
And a ballot. And a ballot question.
Depending on funding mechanism, and this, this property is currently, you know, valued at over one million, slightly over $1 million, negotiation of that could change that value that would go into the PNS, but yes, it's, would most likely require that we do a debt exclusion or a one-year capital exclusion, that would be determined later when we're starting to understand the dollar value.
Right, and then we're also going to talk about if we, when we do borrow that money, if it's, if we borrow some money to put an entrance in, and things like that, that's all that...
For improvements.
That's improvements that we may need right now, for the, you know, as part of the overall.
Overall cost. We wouldn't need this whole 20 acres immediately, but we would, over a long period of time, as we needed it, develop that section of it. What I see is, when you go in, or wherever your exit is going to be, you have a road that would go the whole length of the cemetery, in time, and then every, all the little areas off of it would be cemetery.
Well, we have to purchase the whole property at once, we have to...
Oh, you have to purchase it all.
The whole property at once, into an entrance.
We're not going to, we're not going to turn it into a 20-acre cemetery overnight.
No, we don't, yeah.
It's going to be over many years.
Mr. Chairman, and it's being brought to us, because obviously we're, just so the people know, we, you feel that we are running out of space at our present cemetery, and do we think this will be taken care of for the foreseen future for the town?
Present cemetery was taken over by the town of West Boylston in 1936, it's 19 acres. And it's now 2018, and we probably have two or three more years left on the cemetery, you know, if people don't buy lots, then we have more years, but we've got one section left, and so, that's a long period of time, and...
So how many lots are left, Jack? How many lots are left?
Approximately 435 lots left, bearing in mind that most people want a headstone, and in order to have a headstone, you have to buy two lots. When a family buries a loved one, oftentimes, several members of the family will buy several of the lots surrounding that one burial. I asked Kevin last week how many we're selling per year against how many we have left. 435 left, and we're averaging selling 80 per year, so it comes to five years at tops.
Yeah.
One year we sold 100, so, you know, that number can, we can't control the rate at which they're being sold, but one can say with relative certainty that within five years, that'll be it, there'll be no more room.
Thank you.
And, and the...
And it gives, this gives us time to begin planning that new cemetery location, and to peck away with in-house labor to the extent we can, in developing, say, the first two acres, to render it ready when we run out of room at Mount Vernon.
And just so the public knows, we have to, as a town, we're required to provide cemetery space as a municipality in the state of Massachusetts, we can't say we're full, sorry folks, we're out of business, that's correct?
Right, yes.
It says, the law says that each town must provide one or more suitable locations to bury the people who die here.
And, and all questions we'll need for when we do start bringing this to the public...
Selling it to the tax base, yes.
We'll have to know the answer of what happens if you don't have it.
There's fines.
Okay, that's, we're going to just need to know those numbers, and we're going to need to...
Not only that, but there's the issue, the fact that, for instance, in this town, as in most communities, you have to have been or are a current resident in order to be buried in West Boylston. That's true of most every other community, so if we do not provide it for our residents, our residents are going to be hard-pressed to find a place to bury their dead, because they have to be residents of the community in which they're buried, in most cases, so we don't have much choice.
So, we all walked through the site.
Yes.
There are a few questions, you know, initial questions, couple of people were asking. Number one is, is there any wetland? The way, when I walked through, I didn't see any wetland over there, am I correct, or...
That's correct, there are two small, seasonally wet areas with trees growing, large trees growing in them, which indicates that they can't be wet permanently, because these trees wouldn't be able to survive.
Are those considered as wetland, or no?
They tend to be both, along the property perimeters, and our intention is to put our bodies at least along the perimeter of the backyards of the residents of Maple Street, that's one of the two, very small, we're talking areas no bigger than, say, the upper level of where you're sitting now, very small areas. So, as far as wetness, very, very minor, the other properties I looked at were much wetter, you're not going to find a piece of land, I don't believe, in this town, more suitable for cemetery space than that piece of property we have right now, there's just not many pieces of property available. Other towns, especially within 128 belt, don't have any more land, they can't expand, so they're looking to Mausoleums and that sort of thing, above ground areas. Eventually, we'll have to do the same thing if we don't find a piece of land soon, because there isn't any left, the DCR owns half of it.
Most, more than that.
Yeah.
So the, the reason why we are not going with the DCR, they want a land swap?
Yes, they want a land swap, they want the rail trail.
Rail trail land swap.
If we don't give them the rail trail, they don't want to talk to us about anything, is that...
And they'll be very, very selective on where, where it would allow.
The past land that they gave was hilly.
Yeah.
And the one other question is, you know, it's too early, I know that, you know, we may not have the answer, so, to go to that, that land, what will be the road to go to that? Is it Pierce Street, or is it coming through the Temple Street?
We're never ready for that.
I know, and you...
I'm sorry, I've had a trouble.
It's just where, where we enter, where we enter the property, that's all, that's all part of the design.
That's all part of the design of the, yeah, virtual design of the cemetery.
We have all diff, we have two or three different options.
We have options, we have several accesses, both to Pierce Street and Maple Street, so, and we'll probably make use of a professional designer to help us initially plan the best possible use of that property.
And how many, it's, how many acres?
19.2 currently, with the possibility of another triangle of land that was discussed during the walkthrough, I think Don Gambasini has said that that may be up to a couple of acres, but it didn't look that big when he drew that triangle on your map.
There was no, there was no measurement.
No, he had originally told me he believed it was a couple of additional acres, so minimum 19.2.
And what's the current cemetery?
Mount Vernon is 17 acres.
17 acres, and do you know how many total are buried there?
How many people buried in there?
I have no idea. I know when we finished, when we put in this last section, because it was laid out specifically, we had something like 1,300 graves, and we're down to 400.
I think it's safe to say, if we purchased this land, we don't foresee we're going to need land for many, many years.
We'll never have to worry about it.
We'll never have to worry.
Well, we will, but I'm saying, the town, the town...
Yeah, I would say the next two generations won't have to worry about it, if not more. And the beauty of this piece of land, too, is that it does above the current senior housing, and if that needs to expand, you know, there's possibilities, this land affords us, as a town, possibilities, expanding that somewhat.
So we need to, uh...
For us baby boomers.
To, to add on to that, you know, that property does come with that structure, the house, right?
House and a garage.
House and a garage.
Cover.
Oh, yes, it comes with a, it comes with the garage.
Yeah, that, that garage is impressive.
Yeah, it is.
I would make a motion that we start negotiating with the owner to purchase this land.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, would we keep the same subcommittee that we currently have?
Imagine so.
Seems to work.
To talk about that?
It seems to have worked, so if it isn't broken, let's not fix it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Vote to approve and authorize the chair and town administrator to sign Green Community Designation Grant Contract and related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you want to just give an update on what exactly that is?
So the Green Communities Grant is a designation grant for achieving green community status with the State Department of Energy Resources, the grant is $145,435, and it's specifically earmarked for energy efficiency measures at the school buildings, and so the school department is poised, ready to start putting out the necessary bids for that, as soon as we get the contract executed and get the notice to proceed from the state, so we're hoping that the majority of this grant-related work would get done this summer.
Do you know what kind of work?
It's all electrical-related, so a large, a large part of the project are replaced... are replacing regular light fixtures with LED light fixtures.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consider our voting endorsement of May twenty-first, Town Meeting warrant.
And this process is just to see if there's any articles that you, as a board, want to vote to recommend.
I would have the moratorium on adult-use marijuana that we, we vote.
I'll second that.
If it's just a moratorium to put the, give the, the town time to set up a bylaw change to, to regulate how we're gonna let these properties into the, into the town, or these businesses.
Is it, is it the only one?
So that's, I just thought, I just thought of that one, I haven't looked them all.
It's Article twenty-nine.
Okay. So, all in favor, Article twenty-nine?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. What else is there?
I'm not sure what else is, besides norm, what, what else, I mean, I can't think of, besides normal.
Well, everything else, we kind of agree to every-
Well, there's the, there's the small items, the small funding items. You have the, um-
Sixteen?
You've got the money for the DPW mower, that's sixteen thousand. Uh, you've got the eighteen thousand dollars for the vehicle lift at the DPW garage. So those are Articles fourteen and fifteen. Article sixteen was the three thousand six hundred dollars for the town hall irrigation system. Article seventeen was ten thousand dollars for the parks materials. Six thousand dollars under Article eighteen for the police assessment.
Do we normally, we don't normally take positions on-
Normal, but-
On those, I mean, those are just the normal, general articles that, the numbers are different, but we have those, those articles year after year after year, and we don't normally take a position on them.
Well, we kinda agreed on, when we put them on the warrant. When we, if there's something that we agreed to put on the warrant, like the DPW truck, stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've agreed, every, everything that's on here was agreed to unanimously.
Right.
Correct. But we, but agreeing what, what we put on the warrant, as far as I'm concerned, I, I always say, "Yes, let's put it on the warrant."
Let, let town people-
But I, yeah, I agree with Pat. I think those are just, you know, buying a truck, or buying a lawn mower. I mean-
You know, the, the-
We have, we have the director of the DPW-
So one of the things that I think we should, we should, um, support is the, what was the article number?
Thirty-two, income fair credit.
The, uh, to modify the abatement percentage for, was it the abatement percentage one?
So those are Articles thirty-one and thirty-two?
Thirty-one and thirty-two. Those are, those are substantial changes to stuff that we do in town. You know, so I, I would say we vote to endorse Articles thirty-one and thirty-two, which is the military abatement percentage, and to increase the threshold for the income tax, or threshold for the elderly abatement using the circuit breaker credit numbers, which, I looked it up, it was eighty-six thousand for a married couple, and fifty-seven thousand for a single person.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone else just votes, voting.
Well, this, the, the only thing that this causes, when the moderator says, "Is there any board stat?"
Correct, yeah.
Having think, that we could just say, "The board voted to, you know, recommend this act." Will we have the packages by?
Yes, so the, um, the motions are almost completed. We're just dealing with some final changes on the revolving fund article motion. Those will go to Town Council tomorrow, and you should have motions by Friday afternoon. I should be able to send them around to everybody. And they'll all be in nice, big font.
Eric's going.
Thank you.
It's gonna be four hundred pages instead of a hundred.
Did you get the answer on, um, the deployed soldier? Um, what happens if it's, if they're gone for six months out of the year?
The answer was that the Board of Assessors would be developing regulations to decide on those types of provisions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else with that? Next one is, uh, one-twenty-seven, Hart Wall Street, Cofflin. Request for board to consider TIF in exchange for community partnership. Uh, Nita and I met with them a couple of weeks ago. They were not aware that we had, uh, said we would not give a TIF. They were not aware of that, to Steve.
Okay.
So he, he was not-
So we're just taking it off the, we're not discussing it then?
No, at, at the meeting, um, they were not aware that the board took no action on deciding to do a TIF or not, based on Steve's request. They came to meet and introduce themselves, um, and during that discussion, John had asked them, you know, "Are you looking for anything?" And, um, they said actually they would be still be interested in a TIF. Um, that's when we shared with them that, you know, previous discussion with Steve McGriddian had led to no action by the Board of Selectmen regarding, and, you know, any discussion of a TIF. Um, but they did press the issue, and they said, "What might it take to get the board to give consideration to developing a small TIF?" And there was some back-and-forth discussion about some things to try to get a sense of what they were willing to even do. Um, basically, what they said was that they would like to have the Board of Selectmen have discussion, if you'd be so willing, to talk about some sort of community contributions that you feel might be worthy of sitting down and talking about a TIF. And, you know, they were looking at all kinds, a range of different things in terms of, you know, funding different programs, whether they be, um, you know, specific activities, sports programs, um, information, um, support that they could provide the community, a whole range of different things. They, they certainly seem to be coming from a medical or health-related background, given that's what they're doing is, you know, they're doing clean medical manufacturing.
I guess I'm a little confused. They're asking us to give them a TIF to lower their taxes, so they give us something to pay for a program?
They're, they're looking, they said they would be willing to do some sort of community contribution if there was some ability to provide a, a TIF. And that was really the only conversation we had. There was no further detail discussed.
I don't think I've changed my stand yet. Go ahead, Pat, I'll-
I, I, it doesn't change my stand, and furthermore, let's say, just to, to use numbers. Let's say we give them a TIF that's worth a hundred thousand dollars over the life of the TIF. They're gonna turn around and give us something back. If they were willing to give us a hundred thousand dollars back to fund certain things, I would still have to say no, because now we're circumventing the whole budgeting process. We're lowering the taxes so that they can earmark where a hundred thousand dollars is gonna go in the town. It, it makes no sense. The purpose of a TIF is to attract new companies, to grow the town, to attract new businesses that are gonna bring employers in here. They've already signed, they're signed, sealed, and delivered. They, and for us to give them a TIF doesn't make any sense. It, it's not what the purpose, it's not the purpose of a TIF.
So we, we're not taking any actions? Is that correct?
I, I just do wanna point out that we asked specifically if they could provide any guarantees in terms of additional jobs being brought into town, and they couldn't. They really said it was hard for them to do that. And so to me, if, if they had been able to commit to, you know, adding fifty new jobs above and beyond the employees they'd be bringing, or something like that, that might be worthy of serious, you know, consideration. But they specifically said they were not able to commit to any increase in jobs.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's great that they're coming to town, and I, I would love for them to still help us out, even though we're not cutting taxes a hundred thousand to get, you know, whatever the case may be. I, I would love to, you know, we wanna be good neighbors. Uh, we've worked with Steve, as, as everybody knows, so, um, that, I think that's just enough right there that we worked so hard to make sure it happened. We would hope that we have, we have a, you know, we have, we can talk to them in the future about helping out the town.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we take no action? All right. Uh, board retreat, you have dates fourth, eleventh, or June fourth, eleventh, or twenty-fifth?
I can do the twenty-fifth.
It should definitely, it should be after the election.
After the election, I would say.
So it would be twenty-fifth?
I mean, do, now, do we, do we need to wait till after the election?
Right, now that you say that.
I mean, Bob isn't-
He withdrew.
He withdrew.
Yeah, the only other option is the, is the fourth, is the day before the election.
That's what I'm saying. We, we, initially, I said we can't do it the fourth, because the board may change.
Yeah, but still, you know, you know, we always do this, you know, after the election, so.
All right, so the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth looks fine.
Uh, probably.
Is there a reason the eleventh?
Pat, I thought I saw an email that said you couldn't do the fourth and the eleventh.
Oh, yeah, I can't do the fourth.
Or the eleventh, I think the email said.
That's at the bottom of the calendar, hold on.
I think you sent an email that said you couldn't do the fourth or the eleventh.
I can do the twenty-fifth.
That's exactly what the email said.
That's what we are saying.
Can you look at the eleventh?
He said he sent an email, I trust him. You know if I count it better than me? The eleventh, uh... No, I could do the eleventh. I don't know why I said I couldn't. So I could do the eleventh or the twenty-fifth.
I would prefer the eleventh, if we can do it. If not, we'll do the twenty-fifth.
This one be it. We can do it.
It won't be it?
No, what, what day is it?
It's a Monday.
Huh?
Monday.
Monday.
I mean, I'll have to look again, because I'm only going by Pat's email. Pat's gonna, I know Pat's gonna leave today and say, "I do have something on the eleventh," but, um-
It's not on the calendar.
Yeah. So the-
So Monday, the eleventh, which is, uh, weekend of the election.
Uh, yeah, and we're gonna do, what time are we gonna try to do?
Six, six-thirty?
Try to do six.
Six?
Try to do six.
Yeah.
Where are we doing it?
To be determined.
All right.
It'd be nice if we could maybe get the Holy Cross contemplative center.
That'd be a lot easier.
Maybe just over here.
Or here, one of the two. All right. Town Ministries Report. Uh, go ahead, Nita.
Okay, thank you. So under this report, um, we met as a group to start doing some behind-the-scenes planning for the fall townwide cleanup day. Um, the board had asked that we establish a fall event, so I met with John Scannell from DCR, Butch Jackson, DPW Director, Norm Chanis from the Solid Waste Action Team, and Maggie Lee from the Board of Health Office. And we were looking at dates, and it appears that Saturday, October thirteenth, would probably be the best date to aim for, for this type of event, and using Saturday, October twentieth, as a backup rain date. So the first thing is, we wanted to check to see if this was acceptable to the board. If it is, we'll start moving ahead with a broad notice to the town and asking for volunteers to help us with planning the different aspects of the event.
Are we gonna, I mean, in the past, we've done this together with the, the, um, DCR, correct? For years ago, we did one cleanup, but it was more, yeah.
The, DCR is a full team partner on this.
Does October thirteenth work, everybody?
Both, both of them work for me, but when is the October town meeting?
That would be on the fifteenth, that next meeting.
All right, so it would work, then, in the, in the mailer that goes out, we can, so it does, the dates do coincide.
Yep.
That's good.
I'm fine with the thirteenth.
I'm fine with either, yeah, that's fine.
Thirteenth works, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. And so we have, um, the next team meeting is Friday, May twenty-fifth, at ten, if anyone's interested in joining us. Um, but as I mentioned, we will start to get information out to the town looking for volunteers to try to, you know, join us in planning these, you know, there's so many different details, and we really do wanna make it a fun event with not just a cleanup, but possibly having some sort of gathering at Good Hill Park at the end of the day. You know, some food and, and, you know, other things to really make it be, um, a fun townwide event. Uh, we did get a year-two contribution from Holy Cross in the amount of twelve thousand dollar check. This is their second-year contribution to the Beaman Memorial Library. Um, this donation is meant to be used to increase the Saturday hours of the library during the summer. And according to Anna Shaw, the library director, um, the impact of last summer's hours was definitely reflected in the children's summer reading totals. Last year, the kids read nine thousand four hundred and sixty-six books in eight weeks, and the previous year, they only read eight, eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-one books. You can see that by increasing the hours, it definitely had a positive impact on, on the children's ability to have access to books.
Yeah, that was five years, right?
That's a five-year contribution, but they did say that they, you know, they would make an attempt to have it be for the full five years, and it was good to see that for year two, they were able to give us the full twelve thousand dollars. Um, just to let the board know that we are now working to get the employees from each of our different departments and offices registered onto the new state procurement system. Uh, the state law requires that the towns place bid notices on their web-based procurement system. So we've identified, um, specific users for each officer department. They're registered in the system, and now, at the end of the month, we're gonna be doing the hands-on training with them so that they can become fully proficient in the use of the system, and it will make a big increase in ensuring that we have full compliance with the state procurement regulations. Um, in terms of FY eighteen legal expenditures, just another quarterly update. Uh, we've spent to date of the eighty thousand that was appropriated, we spent forty-six, seven fifty, leaving us thirty-three thousand, two fifty for the remainder of the fiscal year. So we're on track there. Um, and number five is update on the COA move cost, covered by Steve McGriddian. Um, you all remember the long conversations we had with Steve McGriddian about his contribution toward the cost of the move. Um, and it's been interesting tracking to see what that expense to him actually was, and it's, um, to date, it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars that he has covered in direct moving expenses. That doesn't cover the cost of his paying the lease to the church, or the janitorial wages and things like that. That's above and beyond that.
Does that include the computer costs?
It does.
And I heard that there was a significant, um, charge that he was not expecting as much. I was just wondering.
There, there were, there were computer complications, definitely. It wasn't, it wasn't specifically with IT, but it was with communications, the cable and phone and such, but that did take more work than had been anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask you one other questions? Did we get that fifteen, is it a fifteen thousand dollar?
No, that's-
He said he promised before this.
No, that would be coming, that would be coming later. I don't remember the exact date that we committed to.
I thought, oh, okay.
Yeah. And the good thing about that is, yes, he paid these funds, but that infrastructure's not gonna be in the church. So it's, it's great for the church as well.
And, um, just wanted to give a, a thanks to Mr. McMonahan from Anger Book Village. He recently made a donation of a large amount of office supplies to Selectmen's Office. Um, apparently, his business was, was transferring to the West Coast, and he was kind enough to get in touch with Nancy and see if there are materials that we could use. So we took advantage of, of what we could, and I just wanted to give a thank you to him for that. And then lastly, to wrap up tonight, I wanted to give special recognition tonight to Celia Hardigan. She's served twenty years on our Board of Health, and, um, she's just stepping down effective this past April. Um, that's, that's quite a commitment she's given to our Board of Health, and I just wanted to give acknowledgement and thank her tonight on that commitment that she gave to the town.
Can we put a letter together and send it from all?
Yes, yes, and the Board of, the Board of Health will also be doing their own recognition.
And the donation, did we send a letter to that gentleman as well?
Yes, Nancy wrote a thank you.
Thank you. All right, just update, Police Station, valid communication invoice number six-four-seven-three-nine-three, seven thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars, seventy-nine cents.
Some more.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kailan Bennett invoice number six, eight, I'm sorry, eight-seven-four-six for seventy-nine dollars, fifty-one cents.
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we did have some issues with those that aren't on here, the ones we had questioned, or did we resolve it that night? Didn't we have a question with one of the bills? Was it the Police Station one, or?
The one-
There were, there were some CBA bills, um, that dealt with the change order.
But we, those aren't on here.
They are. So first, we're gonna be asking you, and the next item is to approve change order number one, which covered those expenses.
Okay.
So, um-
Senior Senate, uh, Cardinal Construction, change order number one, the flow test in the geotech for ten thousand four hundred dollars. We talked about that.
And we agreed to send it, okay, some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.[1742.74]
Kayla and Bennet invoice number fifty-seven-four-seven for eight thousand seven hundred dollars.
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Kayla and Bennet invoice numbers five-seven-six-one, fourteen thousand fifty-five dollars.
Some more?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
R C Builders, payment number one, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, twenty dollars.
Some more?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Inc. Engineering Testing, invoice number two-four-eight-three-seven for two thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Cattle Construction, payment number seven, total twenty-seven thousand, sixty-one dollars. So we have part A is ten thousand four hundred, and part B is sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars.
And this is where it was broken out with the value of that change order that you just approved, and then the remaining value. So now that you've approved change order number one, you're free to approve the full amount of the twenty-seven thousand, sixty-one dollars.
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And like Pat always says, these are all discussed in the first meeting, and we all agree to them, and we come here to vote for them. Appointments and resignations, resignation Shannon McNary, Pay Court Production Assistant effective five-seven, two thousand and eighteen. Meeting invitation announcements, well, first of all, May twenty-first is a town meeting at seven o'clock at a high school, and we have a Board of Selectmen meeting at six-thirty, I believe, right? Six-thirty, yes, same day. Then Saturday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, six-thirty, Good Hill Park, there's music and fireworks. Memorial Day exercise is Monday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, eight-thirty AM at St. Luke Cemetery, nine-fifteen AM at the High Plains Cemetery, and ten-thirty AM at Great Assembly at the library, and Mount Vernon Cemetery. If anybody needs any assistance or wants to help, you can call Jack McCormick at seven-seven-four-two-six-one-oh-five-nine-six. And you're invited to march in memory of your loved ones. Future agenda items?
I'm fine at this time.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I have is...
I should have said, can we get an update on the, when they're gonna finish the center of town? And they're telling us it was gonna take two weeks and...
May tenth.
Well, yeah, but hello. As well as the arrow, when you're at, like, on the Honey Side side, and you're going towards Central Street, the green arrow never gets lit. And I've had complaints that the green light goes, but the arrow to go left, you can sit there for four cycles and it doesn't come on, so...
I think everybody probably noticed also, one forty is so backed up. And I spoke to the chief today, and we, we kind of think that when they did the grinding, that sensor that's in the street might, and that could be the same case. Those sensors were taken out, so that's why if you come home that way, one forty, it's backed up to the landfill every night now. Hopefully, maybe that could be the same situation with that green arrow, but I think, I think it will answer all the questions if they tell us when they're gonna finish. I don't, are they working on it every day? I'm not, I don't know. The signs up that says they're working on it every day, are they?
They are doing some of the side, sidewalks. Doing some catch basins.
It looked as though they were digging up some of the, the trip lines for the signals the other evening too, but I'll ask Butch to give a complete report.
And one of the persons from District Three, you know, Mass Devotee, she does, knows it.
Especially with Memorial Day coming and the fire must, I mean, they were all gonna do this, what, in two weeks? And over a month?
It's supposed to be done in two weeks, twenty-first.
And we're going on a month?
The reason they say this, you know, they, this kind of stripping, they did it in various towns. And they are accumulating the work, and they want to paving done on one stretch. So that's why it's kind of delayed, delayed. It was supposed to be last week, so someone said, you know, this, this week, and who knows when they will be.
Anything else, sir? The only quick thing I had is about the door locking policy. I know we've talked about this for a long time, but like last night, we went to get in here, they couldn't get in. I went to open the door. This code's been changed, and somebody was behind me, someone else wanted to get in, they couldn't get in. So I know we use that door over there, but maybe we can put it on a timer or something, so it's open till eight o'clock and locks at eight o'clock. There has to be some better way, because I couldn't get in the door, and they had, there was two people behind me and had to walk in the other door too. And just, it's difficult with the handicap people.
This is the main door he's talking with. The side door we opened, the meeting room door we opened.
The meeting door, I'm talking about the main door. I'm talking about the main door.
When people come in, uh, handicapped, they have to go down the hallway and down.
Are we getting a code, and I didn't realize that it was changed? Did I miss that email?
It was changed. My code does not work in that door. The code we had does not work.
Door two?
Okay.
But door one is, per the policy, at least for now, is the evening access door.
Right.
So the question to, you know, to review is, is it, is it possible to make it so that the door two has a timed change of...
I, I know the problem we, we did because it was kept being left open at night and stuff like that. So if we can do some kind of, maybe get the lock program, I don't, I'm sure the door...
The current system we have in place cannot do that.
You can't lock the door, you can't program it?
It's just, it's just a code, it's, so we would have to upgrade doors, which we've talked about, but the cost is... But I mean, opening and locking it again is what we're gonna have to do. We do that with door, we do that with the main meeting room door. I, I guess on busier, on busier nights, I think the biggest issue was when the other lock wasn't working, we were all saying, I'm gonna go through the other door, just in case this doesn't work and I'm stuck here. But we think we have it worked in the rain the other night, so...
Again, you know, this code, you know, only very few, few of us know, so...
The public, the public is using.
The door continues to be open, and I get visits to my office that the door is unlocked. And then I have to watch the camera.
Right.
And we had a meeting, a couple, on a Monday, that special meeting to review the warrant, and I went and I watched, and we had someone come in, and it's very frustrating to the people downstairs who are charged with locking the door at the end of the day, 'cause we had someone come in, and they unlocked the door. Five more people came in, and no one went out and locked the door. I mean, if you would have locked the, unlocked the door and then locked it, that's fine, but the custodian leaves at seven-thirty.
Right.
And it's extremely frustrating to the people downstairs that the door continues to be left open.
Right, I, I agree, and I know, I know that is...
And we passed the policy, it's your policy that you passed, on how the door would be maintained, and that door is overseen by the treasurer-collector, and the backup is the Town Council's office.
Well, I would just ask that if we could get some kind of information on what it would cost if we put a timed delay lock on it, if it's possible?
All right, do you think, you know, if you unlock it, as soon as he go inside, you know, it will lock that way?
But that's, that's not solving the problem, because it's just a lock, you open it, and other people wanna get in.
And we're back to the same...
That's why when we went around the building and we went with the sign person, evening access, after-hours access, it's posted on the sign that you come into door number one. That's what we've all agreed that, to.
Sounds like it's not working. Sounds like we have to revisit it.
I just, I would just like to ask, like I said, if we could get some prices.
Did we have an issue with this when we were on Hart Wall Street, when we had keys to unlock it? Was the door being left open?
No, we never really had a, because you could lock it, you know, you could just lock it, you know.
That's what I'm saying, when we're, I mean...
I don't recall it being an issue with Hart Wall Street.
It's frustrating for the task force, because those doors are open.
Oh, I, oh, I understand, but what I'm saying is, when we had keys on Hart Wall Street, the chairman of whatever committee was there would lock the door on their way out.
Right.
So...
I think until we could find a solution that, you know, is affordable and easy for people to remember, I think we should just ask people that if you're the last one out of the building at night, just check to make sure that both doors are locked.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
That does mean, though, that...
We have asked that, and it didn't happen. And I, every morning, I have treasurer's office saying, the door is unlocked again. And they, they are wonderful about checking this door. I watch the camera. You know, they, they check the door, they check the, on latch. It's, it's very frustrating to them.
Right.
And as I said, a couple of weeks ago, I watched, and I watched six people come through that door, and not one person locked it, and it was left open all night long.
Well, I can, I can safely say, I let people in that door last night, but I couldn't unlock it. I let people in because they walked up the ramp, and I was on the other side of the door. I opened it, let the people in, 'cause they were going in the elevator to come to the meeting.
You were on the inside?
Yeah, I was on the inside, though. I couldn't do it from that door.
I, I couldn't do it from the outside, and there was somebody behind me wanting to get in.
So I, I just think, I've, I've mentioned this, that the system to put a computer on it and have it controlled and set is expensive. I mean, it's very expensive, 'cause that's the next step. There's no, there's no way to, I don't think, I think it's what we have now, and the next step is a computer system that, 'cause, hey, safe, let's, let's... I think everybody, if not most people in town, know the combination to the door. I mean, everybody that's been currently on a committee are, is, is not on anymore, knows this door. Anybody that's used this building...
Not the new one, not the new one.
No, I'm saying the other door.
Right.
I mean, it's getting in the building. You know, everybody that uses this building, once they get the code, it's, it's there. So I mean, the next step is just looking at some type of system.
Well, I think, I think we should get a code on it. It's not gonna hurt to get a code.
Can we do it all basically, and just put that lock key?
Now I go in the side door.
That would be the worst, that would be the worst.
No, because you need to have more keys than...
You have that, when we were mixed, you know, everybody, you have a key.
Every in the world had a key.
They did.
And what a inconvenience in the public that wants to use the building to have to get here at a certain time, pick up a key, bring it back when the office is open. I, I like the car, I mean, I'm talking, I wanna see something like that at the senior centers too. So, you know, residents that do use these buildings can use a code to get into the building, and then it can be, if it's a computer system, someone can put a code in for a little leak and say it expires as of midnight that night, that it's never used again.
All I would ask is we get a price on it. Any real to me?
Motion. Motion, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.